You have one.
They went to.
All the ways.
Yeah, for the that one.
Let me do.
Take your hands, take them. Take your hands, take your.
I like it so much.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no.
But then all you have.
Good seeing you. It's good.
Thank you.
Same.
Thank you. Yeah. She come in. But it's.
I I send.
He is looking at each other.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
You know.
So.
We get attention.
Now, if you something also.
There we go.
You know.
You're actually.
No.
Okay, right.
Yes.
You know. You know. You know. I'm great. I'm great. I'm great.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
It's. 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 Yeah. Yeah. Um. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
She. She. She.
Yeah. Yeah.
She. She. Um. 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 Hold on. Hold on. Hold on. Um. 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 Then we. Then we. Then we. Point. 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 This. 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 Five minutes. Five minutes. Five minutes. Yeah. 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 Um. 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 You should. You should. You should.
It's. 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 Yeah. 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 Yeah.
That. There will be a presentation on the grant, so that residents that are interested in those can be. Uh, can make themselves available at the meeting. Secondly, um, understand that the bid went out for the. Pal Building at, um, Francis Jerry Park. The funding for that, for the grant was a half a million dollars. It looks like those bid amounts came in at two or three times those amounts. So, um, what is the plan for moving forward with that particular project? And not just for the construction of it, but obviously there will be some, um, annual costs associated with it. Once it's, it's constructed, um, what are the plans for the town being able to cover those into those additional costs as well? So if we can address those in the special, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was that one.
All right, next item is the approval of the consent agendas without the outdoor festival.
Hmm.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. All right, the consent agenda has been approved, and now we're ready for the. We'll go ahead and start with the Zora Outdoor Festival of the Arts M O U. Um, earlier in workshop, we had some. Amendments that we need to be a part of it, so that was one of the reasons to pull it out of. Um, consent agenda, so we can approve it with. The amendments.
Yes, ma'am. So the changes for the agreement that will need to take place is. One point three, the time from twelve thirty P M closure to three thirty P M. In section two point two, Friday, February fifteen, twenty twenty six, needs to be changed. Final payment over invoice amount will be due on Friday, February thirteen, twenty twenty six at noon. Same section two point two, full payment is due no later than noon on Monday, January twenty sixth, twenty twenty six. Again, reiterating that the additional payments that may be needed will be due February thirteen, twenty twenty six. Section upon the further conditions governing the contract that, um. P C must do notification to residents of closures at times. Session one point one, where it says P C and the Town Police Department coordinate the public safety. Twenty 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 six. You do by February. Twenty. Edition is one point nine, and it said any time employee that works for P C during the festival should be paid directly by P C. No later than Friday, February twenty, twenty twenty six. That's February thirteen, twenty twenty six. And if it's any employee outside of the police department, needs to be notification to the C A R office. Those are the changes.
All right, so is there a motion to approve with the stated changes?
So move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. All right. The M O U has been approved. Next, we are going to. Council decisions, approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty three, collaboration with local community.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Reddick.
Okay, in your packet is a collaboration. Um. For the local community organization. Who the collaboration under the Town of Eatonville for these Thanksgiving activity that we normally have, which be. Served around about five to about five hundred people. So, um, all the documents, um, have been accounted for if you saw. It's gonna be, um, sponsored by, uh, Mr. Markel Booth, which is Booth giving, who's the corporate sponsor. For the Town of Eatonville and the community agencies. We have about ten agencies that's participating. To serve the community of twenty eight hundred. Uh, residents, including anyone else that comes, uh, from other areas. Um. This collaboration been going on for, uh, for several years, and it works very smoothly. Uh, all the qualifications to have this event is enclosed in the packet, which is a temporary assistance program. Uh, which is certified under, uh. Second Harvest School Bank, and also the memorandum of an agreement with the agencies, uh, that actually. To have these types of. Um, so we have a, a very good plan, uh, this year, uh, right now, we have about. Think it's about thirty, thirty five long years. Um, for this to be already assigned. Um, it will start at, uh, on Monday, the twenty fourth from eleven o'clock A M. And also cook and kill. Uh, she's ready for that Wednesday to have meals that's going to be prepared by her restaurant, and all of these activities. Will be at the Benton Johnson Center. Uh, also, Mrs. King is working on certificates of appreciation for all of those who have been so faithfully and committed. Uh, to the Town Eatonville and making sure that this event, uh, is in success. Um, five one one. Read. There. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Everyone is invited, all the officials, of course, is invited, on the team and also to participants. Thank you.
All right, you.
Yes, it's called to your mind that there is a resolution that's to go with it. Just. Yeah.
I'm ready.
Okay. Resolution. Twenty twenty five dash thirty three, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Eatonville, Florida, approving collaboration with local community organizations. And providing free meals, turkeys, food boxes to the Town of Eatonville, provided for conflict severability and an effective date.
Yeah, where the preamble is their motion.
So move.
Say.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. It has been approved. Resolution twenty twenty, next item, resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty two, clarifying the scope of the mayor's executive powers. I'll let councilwoman introduce it and then. Okay.
Okay, Steve. Um. I was going, I, I had asked if, um, Mrs. King can read this.
You can read it before you introduce it.
Yes.
Yeah, she's asked me to read it in its entirety.
Oh, that's.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty two, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Eatonville, Florida, clarifying the scope of the mayor's executive powers. Reaffirming the requirement for council approval of certain merril. Actions requesting that the mayor submit periodic operational reports. On town-related matters which concern the hunger for property. Provided for scrivver's error, severability and conflicts, and provided for an effective date. Whereas the Town of Eatonville is a strong mayor form of government in which the mayor is set in and with certain executive powers. And the Town Council is the legislative body, and whereas as a strong mayor, the mayor acts. In an executive role within the powers delegated by the Town of Eatonville Charter. But does not virtue, by virtue of holding the mayor's office, get to speak for the Town Council without the council's express approval. And whereas while all elected officials are free to express personal opinions, the Town Council desires to clarify that only actions. And or statement formally adopted by the council reflect the council's official position on town matter. Whereas section two point zero three G of the Charter expressly states, in addition to providing a report. On the finances and administrative activities of the town, the mayor must make such other reports as the Town Council may require concerning operations. Whereas the Town Council requests the mayor submit monthly reports on all matters related relating to the historical. Hunger for property, whereas this resolution is not intended to modify or contravene existing authority granted by the mayor. Granted the mayor under the town's car charter code of ordinance or other applicable law. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Eatonville, Florida as follows. Section one, legislative findings. The findings set forth in the recital above are adopted and fully incorporated herein. As legislative findings of Town Council. Section two, ratification of council required. The Town Council hereby affirms that any actions taken by the mayor outside of the mayor's delegated authority shall have no legal force. And affect absent ratification or approval by the Town Council at duly noted. Public meeting. Section three, operational reports on matters concerning the hunger for property. Pursuant section two point zero three G of the Eatonville Charter, the mayor is hereby requested to submit a report. Monthly operational report to the Town Council on town-related matters which concern the hunger for property. Such reports shall include at a minimum. A notice of any scheduled meetings, conferences, or discussions with. The Dr. Phillips Foundation, Dr. Phillips Charities, and or Orange County Public Schools regarding the conveyance of or sub- subsequent. Development of the hunger for property. B summaries of any written or or communications with Dr. Phillips Foundation, Dr. Phillips Charities, and or. Orange County Public Schools concerning any proposed or planned future development of the hunger for property. Except to the extent such communications are deemed confidential or exempt under Florida's Public Record Act. And C, the status of the implementation, implementation of the community master plan as it relates to the hunger for property. Section four, scribblers error, typographical errors. And other matters of a similar nature that do not affect the intent of this resolution as determined by the town clerk and town attorney. May be corrected without further action of the Town Council. Section five, severability, should any word, phrase, sentence, subsection, or section be held by a court of competent jurisdiction. To be illegal, void, unenforceable, or unconstitutional, then. That word, phrase, sentence, or subsection, or section so held shall be severed. From this resolution and all other words, phrases, sentences, subsections, or sections shall remain in full force and effect. Section six, conflict, all resolutions or parts thereof in conflict wherewith are, to the extent of such conflict repealed. Section seven, effective date, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage and adoption. Passed and adopted this eighteenth day of November twenty twenty five. Attest. Veronica King, Town Clerk, Andy Gardner, Mayor.
Right, let with the motion. All right. You have heard the preamble. You have heard the preamble. Is there motion?
So move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Yeah.
The next item is freezing the position of the deputy chief appropriating the funds to other positions that warrant adequate salary and time insurance.
What are we? Preamble for the preamble.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty four, resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Eatonville, Florida, the Town Council's decision to freeze. The position for the deputy police chief. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget, Orange County, Florida, providing for severability, conflict, and an effective date.
You have heard the preamble. Is there motion?
I'm moving.
Second one, first.
If we move that second it, councilman.
I just wanted to bring to the attention of, um, too, because we had this discussion, um, in the public setting. And probably, um, concerning this particular position that we're gonna possibly, um, freeze, I think it's, um, more. Than, um, satisfying to freeze this particular position and, um, spread it abroad within your police department, because I think the people that serve. This community is more deserving of, um, getting the, um. Fund that's available, because they're here, and I know the one that, the deputy chief that you're, you know, looking to, uh, perhaps bring to the police department. Um, I don't think we're really in a position to, you know, fill that void, so the money that's available that we, um, approved during budget time. I think it'd be, um, used a little bit more efficiently within the, um, rounds of your departments with all your officers. So I just want to, I'm like, let you know how I felt about that. I got a question.
Yes, vice me.
Set, um, do we freeze it just to hold it, then we, um, move it down to the position? I know we said we're gonna put something on the pension. So gotta freeze it first thing we. It's kind of self, uh, it's kind of self-sympathetic. I just, you said, well, for freezing?
Huh?
Uh, before we, that's why I'm trying to say before I vote on it. Do we freeze it, uh, use it, or we need to put it in the pension fund that we said we was gonna do? Or we, um, put it in salaries?
Nah, so there was some questions about it going to the pension fund, and there's some legal things going on with that, so we can't necessarily do that. So we want to freeze it. If you all decide to freeze it, you freeze it, and then I think you all gave us thirty days. To come back to you all and give you all a plan of action of how the money will be, um, divided amongst our officers. So Chief and I have been in some discussions, um, on doing so, and then also in doing so. Right now, currently, as Chief and I have talked, we would not use the entire amount, because I believe that there needs to still be a savings that need to go back to be able to cover other things probably within that department. So we will use a portion of that, probably about eighty percent of it, and then the rest of it will be going in a different, um, direction. But we'll come back with you all a clarification within the thirty days.
Okay, also, it was a consideration. It's here on the, the chart, diagram. To also, uh, prevent other employees who, who probably is in the dial deserved to be, uh, having a little bit more on their salary, so all of this is included.
So with, with that, councilwoman, we are evaluating, we are looking at job descriptions and looking at salary ranges. Um, as I stated before, the, it, the reason we're running into this issue is because we're doing raises across the board. Now that we have evaluations in place, and we do merit raises and all that, then you can go towards that, but when, during the budget cycle, if you're going through saying you're giving. Across the board raises, that's what, that's why the, the, the ranges are there. People are making the same amount of money because you're doing it across the board. Now, we go ahead and, and have H R and everybody, the department heads, give what they recommend for salaries on the next budget cycle. Then I think we can have a better grasp and understanding of how, uh, this is happening.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, we have to associate everything that you just stated, um, within the grounds of what we're gonna possibly approve.
So, so councilman, tonight, if, if you all decide to do this, you're just approving the freezing of it.
Okay.
Then there's another step, couple more steps that we will have to do after the fact.
That's within thirty days.
Within thirty days, that, that was the recommendation through you all, will.
Right.
And in this resolution that we come back to you all within thirty days, cause then with Ms., um, Ms. Gibson, the finance department, we have to do a budget adjustment and other things.
That's fair.
Other documentation to come along too, you all.
Yeah, we definitely want to go ahead and freeze this, especially while they can move forward with, knowing that, uh. It's, I mean, in the best interest of other people, that's gonna be possibly done, these, um, raises sometimes, yeah.
All right, so the, um, resolution states to freeze the position. I want to make sure that it doesn't state to redistribute it to the. Regarding time, I didn't see that, so we're okay with going forward with our resolution, just freeze it.
It's, it's just freezing it.
Yes. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right, and then the final item is the. Discussion for the PAL central.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Saturday. We have two discussion items. We have the PAL and then we moved the residential contract down to discussion.
Oh, yes, we did. Yes, we did. Yes, buddy.
Okay, good, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, residents, guests. Um, I'm just here to provide an update on uh, the progress on the PAL center, the building that is um, going into the um, Catalina Park area is beginning of um, much development that's coming to the Catalina Park uh, and the surrounding um, stormwater improvements and park improvements. We received bids for the PAL Center on October thirty first. Uh, we received uh, bids from two contractors, Gomez Construction and F S V Construction. Uh, as was mentioned earlier by um, one of the citizens, Gomez, uh, the prices, uh, the bids came in higher than uh, the announced budget amount of uh, five hundred thousand. Um, but both firms, as part of the uh, request for bid, uh, have submitted information regarding how they plan to meet the uh, budget and to meet the time. Now, we, uh, the schedule for construction, we did make a request of um, an extension to the time to uh, DOJ and we're waiting to hear back. However, in the meantime, we are uh, in the process of negotiating uh, the uh, construction budgets. Uh, and the company F S V has been very aggressive and they have committed to uh, wanting to reduce the uh, and do some value engineering on the project to reduce the cost. Um, we were um, it was with pride that the architect had provided a design that would be complimentary to the park. Uh, however, some of those costs, we will have to take a look at, such as metal roofing, uh, and changing that design from metal to maybe asphalt shingles, they provided other additional suggestions of moving, removing an overhang which uh, contributed to a higher amount of the cost, uh, as well as uh, removing the generator, which we have solutions to uh, provide a generator in the future for the project uh, in using, utilizing some of the generator that, some generators we may have in our possession to the um, project site. Now we're working, uh, the architect is involved and working with the contractor to come up with additional suggestions uh, to um, bring that, the cost that they proposed down. So we'll be working in the next week to get that resolved and moving to contract and we'll be bringing that back to council for the uh, final negotiated amount. Any questions?
Yes, um, well, for me, uh, for starters, um, first of all, from the beginning, um, I wasn't, I don't know about anybody else that sits up here. But I wasn't um, necessarily um, aware of the bidding process and how it went. And that was another slap in my face in terms of how that process um, was, you know, taken and gone about. And I'm not too happy with it, but I think we need to revisit this and put it out for another bid and possibly get a cheaper rate in terms of how we're gonna um, construct this particular building that I don't wanna have in Cali because I know I had some engagement with some residents and they're not, you know, particularly happy about um, building a PAL Center and their community. And I think we need to have a little bit more engagement, especially with this being a discussion tonight and not decision. And um, moving forward, we're making sure that we really got some clarity on how we're gonna go about doing this. I know, know we're kinda at a crunch time with January twenty sixth approaching fastly. And I know if we don't have something in place, it kinda dissolves and go away. Um, do I want that to happen, no I don't, but do I, will we done in an accurate and uh, more adequate way? Yes, I do, and the way that it's been gone about, I'm, I'm not too pleased with. And um, so like I said, though, we need, and I had a discussion with the C E O, um, concerning this, he and I are gonna have have a sit-down meeting um, regarding this also, but I think it's not what you do, it's how you do it. And the way it was presented to this council, I think, was um, somewhat disrespectful the way that, the manner of how it was done with us not having no um, recollection of how the bidding process went or anything, but you want us to sit here and approve something that we have no recollection of, I'm not gonna do it. Um, I do trust some parts for the administration part, which is the mayor position. And some things I don't, and this is one of the particular things that I don't trust. And speaking of grants that we didn't have an opportunity to speak on tonight, um, that so many other people have questions about. And that's another thing that puzzles me also, like, exactly how all these grants are working, like, or, or the side of the town or the CRA, because I can recall a lot of these grants been on the CRA side now, they are on the town side. So, you know, I just need confirmation on how we're gonna um, deal with these grants moving forward. While won't be any um, you know, issues in terms of how we're gonna do these grants. Because there's a lot of them that we're gonna be going on the tight line of um, you know, and more, that's the cop, so, yeah, that's my concern.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. Uh, this time, I just don't feel that we are ready for this. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about this in the last year or so. We have, we have had over two years to be in preparation with this. So um, the administration has not moved forward with this uh, as they should have. Um, and I believe the last report um, that you provided to us is that I just don't think we're gonna complete this in the next sixty days. Um, the community in Catalina Park and also within Eatonville, they were under the assumption or maybe was told that they would be able to use the park for community reasons other than law enforcement activities. Then we were told that, no, you can't use it, and now it's for law enforcement activities. And I think that was a little unfair to the residents because they were looking forward to having something on their end of the building rather than them transporting from Catalina Park down to the David Johnson Center. Um, also, I just wanna say that I remember sometime back in two thousand twenty four about my email where I had sent Mrs. King, our clerk, town clerk in January the twenty second, two thousand twenty four. All the grants that we were working on at that particular time, the community policing grant, the million-dollar grant award, there was no vote established. I have yet to get an answer whether or not this particular project has actually received the vote of the majority of the council for that. So I'm still searching and if Mrs. King, if you find it anywhere in your records, please let me know. But so far, I have not searched it because you, I think you've answered me on that question twice in the last two years. Okay, also, um, hopefully we have cleared up the um, issue whether or not this grant is actually a town grant or not a CRA grant. Um, the information from Mrs. Johnson, she stated that it is, it is a town grant. Um, so I haven't heard any more about that, about that dispute. Um, I, I just don't think that we're ready for this right now, and also I did send a request for an extension to Congressman Frost to try to give us a little more time so we can ratify all of these things that need to be done. So we have to make sure that we have actually fulfill our obligations as council members to make sure that anything that was left undone and it wasn't done correctly, that we go back and ratify those things, those items and those concerns so that way we can get it right. So I'm all about trying to make sure that we doing things in the right manner. So we can't just go ahead and do things without it come before, before council. So we, we have a procedure that we need to abide by. And hopefully, this is something here that we will learn in the, in the past, from the past, so we can move in the future. And that's all I have to say about this, thank you.
Okay. First of all, had this building been moved, was it set somewhere else before? I know we had a meet here and it was facing Leaning Street. Did we move it to another area of the park?
The um, building at one point was, we were looking at putting it on the uh, north west side of the park where that retention pond is. Uh, and it would, it still was facing the park. However, um, we looked at the cost and the time to relocate, fill in that retention pond, relocate utilities. Uh, and we were not able to get that done within the timeframe that we needed to execute the grant. Uh, so uh, second, uh, alternate location in the park um, was uh, determined.
Are we under budget for this? Let's see, we got bun, construction bun money we be asking for?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Performance bun money, we be asking for five hundred thousand?
It was five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand is the, the budget for the project. The, the bids came in higher than the five hundred thousand.
So we're under budget on this project?
We're, we were over budget.
You both budget?
I mean, well.
I mean, it's saying this, trying to, one, one, some billion.
Right, the, the bears came in higher than the budget.
Yes, so we under budget. And my other concern I have, um, I thought this building was for the community. Uh, when the gentleman stood up in the meet saying, we can't have birthday parties, we can't have repasses, we can't have these things in this building. I was like, what? But that's one of the reasons I would support it, if it was used for these things here, kids' activities, part of recreational part. The one uh, at the school program in Catalina Park and for the team over there. And most recreations, they do have those programs in those cities, um, centers in the areas. So when I heard that, I'm like, why we building a building that they can't use these things? So I was, my notion was like, um, councilwoman ran off like, you can't use this building just for what? What's the usage for this building, for all these activities?
That's, that's a good question and I'll turn it back over, um, but I would like to mention that my role uh, the public works department role is to build a facility, to build a building, the actual brick and mortar of the building, we do not do programming whatsoever uh, on, on any of the buildings that we build, we worked on pool building, we don't program that. Same thing with, um, we do programming with our facilities like the water treatment plant and the like, but uh, for facilities like that, we just get it built. And I just wanna mention one thing, uh, what added to the budget on this project is there was a definite interest in having restrooms in the um, onsite. And then we also, second thing wanna mention, that we uh, did go after um, two funding opportunities to seek uh, community center type buildings. Uh, we also did the research on um, DOJ type substation type buildings. But we've seen them in numerous cities be side by side with a community center. So that's one of the things that we talked about a phase one and a phase two, to be built, uh, to have a building, we uh, I had the resilience of, uh, and compared that to, and that the community could use uh, in addition to the um, the community policing type building. But I, I just wanna clarify, public works has nothing to do with programming and um, that is, we're just trying to build a new building
It has to be under recreational part of Eatonville, but my main thing is why we build a building for just police building, it's Catalina Park, it's that bad in Catalina Park.
So, so Vice Mayor, if, if, if I can jump in for a little bit, um, from my understanding of, of this grant. Um, and I, I'll be clear with it. This is a DOJ grant, which means that the police department have to be involved with it. Um, they would not give this grant to no one unless police department is attached to it. So that, that's one thing. Second thing is, the grant only called for really seven hundred and fifty square feet. So I don't know anything that you can have for the community that would be to that aspect, so it was only additional seven fifty. We were able to get it up to a higher thing to be do, be able to do more programmatic things. Not saying that recreation can't do it, but the police department need to be, so it's all about education purposes. So along with this grant, it also came along with the ring doorbell. So it's just talking about safety and all of those aspects. I will also state to council that this is a reimbursable grant, correct, Ms. Gibson? So it's reimbursable, so whatever money's been put out there, if you all decide to stall it or don't let it go for, that money would not come back.
Who's the author of this grant? Who wrote this grant?
I'll, I'll answer.
Please answer.
So in two thousand twenty two, I believe, it was an appropriations request.
Who's the author of this grant? Who wrote the grant?
Are you gonna let me talk?
Oh, okay, I mean, I thought you was finished, my bad.
No, in two thousand at my request as mayor. Um, when it was submitted, it was submitted as CRA appropriations, that was not accepted. The response came back and said, no, list, you need to do this as a grant through the DOJ. So at that moment, that is when I, the author, along with um, Andrew you heard it, senior, um, Ms. Barnes, we got together and we submitted the grant itself, the DOJ grant. When that grant was submitted, it was submitted because I saw kids going into the bathroom at Catalina Park. Going to the bathroom in woods. But when I started looking at the cost of bathrooms, they were very expensive. And my mindset was, you can get a whole building in there for what you pay to have bathrooms. That's where the building came in, in the grant, when it was resubmitted. It was never a part of the appropriations paperwork. So when it was submitted, it was submitted with that in mind. It was submitted with the fact that that building could be used for birthday parties because I did not know about the uh, that clarification, the DOJ portion didn't come until later. That is when, and if many of you that have come to the stakeholders meeting, you remember me explaining that on more than one occasion. So it has never been an intention to, to mislead, misguided. A building is a building. And to me, having birthday parties, that just builds community, but that was the rule. So what, what's the priority, bathrooms? So how, however you go with it, you go with it. But since then, when you think about the fact that we've had the shootings in Catalina. So to go against this now and you, that wasn't even a part of the grant. So whatever you feel about me, it, it doesn't matter, that ends in March. But let's be for real, times are not the same, not even from two thousand twenty two to now. So hopefully by the time we work out the numbers, you start thinking more about people. About the people, the majority of the people in Catalina are not against this, but Catalina Park is a community park, not just a Catalina Park. It's for the whole town. And even when someone from another area goes there, they should be able to go to the bathroom in a building. That's for bathroom purposes. So it, but it is the, it is the council's decision. Um, but that is how the grant was submitted.
But we all know it need a restroom, it need restaurants down there, we all agree with that. But with this building and the limitations of citizens in the area. I mean, that's, that's the problem that they have.
But that's not a problem.
Well, I mean.
It says that all the program in that building goes through the chief and it needs to be related to law enforcement. All it takes is engineer.
So, put a building in a park and the chief, the police department runs it, not recreational, have been, been through it. That's what I'm trying, I'm just trying to figure this out.
Recreations of a program. That building itself was not a part of the appropriations. It was in when we resubmitted as a grant under DOJ. And because the Department of Justice, it goes through the police department in regards to that building being used.
Mayor Gordon, if I can, um, I can recall you just recently saying something about the most, the majority of people in Catalina um, welcome this particular um, PAL Center, uh, to my recognition, that's not true. Especially, especially with the people that I've had an opportunity to speak to. And I know we've had engagement on this particular um, project also with people being present and stating their um, opinion on how they feel about this particular um, community um, center that will be possibly going to Catalina. Now, you gotta think, bathrooms, yeah, I think it's, you know, um, a good thing if we can get to that point. But we're talking about um, citizens of a community that we're trying to build something in that they don't want. Can you imagine someone trying to build something next to your property or in your community that you don't necessarily want and the majority of the people don't want it either? But it's gonna be built anyway, you know, what kind of president that sets for us as a council? And then on top of that, the way that these grants have been gone about, uh, I'm, 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 I'm trying to wrap my head around how we even get to the um, subject of pushing them out anyway. And then I know you just stated about you the, um, one that actually was the, you know, um, one that kinda pushed it. So while we were, we announced, you know what I'm saying, it was on the CRA side, but you said it wasn't um, gonna be possibly done on the CRA side, you had to go through the DOJ, which had been done. Um, gonna be possibly done on the CRA side, you had to go through the DOJ, which had been done, but on top of that. We really had no collaboration of talking and really digesting this thing and getting to a full understanding. How this thing is really gonna work because that was my um implication too is. Okay, it's gonna be done for the residents and having parties and having, you know, things of that nature, you know, because we don't have facilities here, which is sad. You know what I'm saying? That's why we need to push the narrative to do some things. And then I can recall you just stated out about the size of the facility. It doesn't matter the size of it, we're building a facility. I think it, you know, is associated with. The police department DOJ power, but I think we need to probably, you know, if we can possibly um. Spread abroad to make it more community. Versus just being strictly police because the implication that people have is. Police and you know how some people feel about police. I love the police, but. Uh, in your community and we feel like it's gonna be safe, but you got a lot of people that don't want this particular center and their community.
And I I'll tell you, councilman, also a part of that, talking with the planning department. It can't be a community center, it has to be, it's considered a clubhouse because of code.
Okay, man, okay, identify that to like, explain that to me as far as club. Is that just strictly police?
No, so when you get in the clubhouse, you you talking about the size, what it can be used for and all those kinds of things. Cause then you gotta also think about parking and all that has to, so that's that's a whole nother thing that we have to discuss too with.
And we're taking away from their park. You know what I'm saying? You gotta think about all these things that's associated with this particular center being built. We wanna build something, but you're talking about doing things for the sake of the community. But you're taking park space away from kids that go out there every day and play, right? Uh, they're not gonna be able to go out there and play the way they. We wanna sit here and talking about, you know, doing things for the residents and doing things that's gonna be just how when we're going down to the register.
So so councilman, I I will say also from my knowledge of stuff that's been brought to me right now is that. There is a plan and action to revamp the entire park of Cali Park and that would also help out with flood mitigation. So we're gonna be getting money from the county and from the state and all that to redo the entire park. But you gotta change heights and levels of it to decrease the flooding in Catalina Park. But then you also get a park out of it. So that's the way of the collaboration um approach that's going on right now. And I I'll apologize for everyone, um, and I have talked with CRA that. Not only does town and CRA um administrations need to sit down and talk and be able to work through this because we are one body, we're collective. So we shouldn't be fighting with each other over grants and all that kind of stuff. We're one community. So being one community, we have to work together, we have to be able to collaborate together to come to a common cause.
And I and I strongly, you know, be with you on that. And then speaking of infrastructure, um, how we're gonna construct this. We know we've been having infrastructure issues down in Catalina for quite some time, and I know that's an orange kind of issue because it's their property. You know what I'm saying? That um since adjacent to what was gonna be actually building this particular um center at. But I say this to say that, um, I don't think, um, I wanna go away from doing anything that's gonna be, um. You know, constructional and successful for our citizens, but we gotta thank and be mindful of the people that do live in Cali Port as well, you know, I know a lot of times. We feel like we just wanna do what we wanna do and sitting up as leaders, we just can't do that. And I think we need to definitely dot our i's and cross our t's. Before making any sudden move and then regretful of it later, you know what I'm saying? Because I don't wanna do anything that's gonna, um. Possibly, you know, um, deter or turn to detrimental things that could, you know, possibly come back and back for all this as like a group.
So can can I offer, can I offer a solution to this board is that we maybe. Um, come up with a a special workshop that we do nothing but discuss grants, discuss plans of actions and all that with timelines. Um, cause you really don't wanna necessarily stop, but how do we come to a a common cause of community? Getting what, because what we gotta realize too, when you're dealing with grants and I I I deal with the issue that you said with grants. If it's going through the bidding process, then I mean it's going through procurement. So it went out on demand star, correct? So when I through demand star, when it's in demand star, that mean it makes it open for whoever wants to bid. That that's not a town council because then the grant saying A, B, C, D, E, that's what goes into the demand star. That person, they had a pre-bid meeting, they come in and then they decided they wanna be a bid that, and then it goes from there. Now, when it comes down to colors and all that, you all can put recommendations, but Mr. Terry is also gonna come in to talk to council. Because some things, if it's already zoned for something, it doesn't have to come to town council per se for approval. Because it's already, if it's zoned to be a a a convenience store in that area. It doesn't have to come to us unless it's coming for an adjustment or they doing a variance outside of what code says.
And if I can, um, I can recall the last executive director that we had on CRA side, I specifically. Um, referenced to her that I wanted this particular police this center to be. Um, down here in between the old rainbow and was that Dixon property? And that was shot down for whatever reason.
So can I can I interrupt for a second? So with that, generally, when it comes down to grants, if you saying that this is three oh seven. He's getting the bullet bar, right? If you're saying that the grant is for three oh seven, that's where you have to use that. You can't just abruptly change, you have to go back.
No, but it was already suggested before you've been moving to the idea of putting it in Cali in the park. But this was something that was just saying we were gonna put it in Cali in the park when I suggested that we put it elsewhere. From the beginning when um Shannon Rose was here, you know what I'm saying, executive.
Was the was the grant already written?
It was a CRA grant.
So the grant was.
Through DOJ.
So so councilman, the grant was already written prior to that, you normally have to put where you're talking about doing something there. Unless we go back.
Think about it now, during the course of the meetings that we had and anybody that know and it's on the record. I suggested that we put this pro- this particular center on the Dixon property. And people didn't like the idea, but for whatever reason, but why you wanna go and put it in a residential area? Even though it's a somewhat of a residential area, but it's on the front street, you know what I'm saying? It makes more sense to put it where. I suggested putting that instead of in a community where people are not gonna be subject to welcoming this thing, you know what I'm saying? So we gotta, we we just gotta be more mindful before we even had the idea of doing things that. You know, that's not gonna make sense.
Right, I I get you, councilman.
And I don't wanna go away from not having a center because I especially if it's gonna go away. He on eventually, if we don't do something to um do forward building it. So if we can't build it in Catalina area. Hopefully we can come to grounds and building it where I suggested from the beginning.
So for a solution, can I come to consensus that I contact you all individually? Then we'll set up a timeframe to further discuss and then come up with a workshop to.
Yes, I think that'd be very.
Family out for everybody to.
I'm open, I'm open for that.
Is is that to discuss this grant or all the grants?
We we can, we can, um, it's at the match discussion, but we can.
Being that this one is the one that we're kinda like, you know.
This this is this is the this is the hot fire right now. This is the one that needs to be cited upon. Very quickly, I would say let's just do this one. Um, and to answer Ms. Johnson's question right now, when we do the the grant portfolio um asset again. It has been moved to um twelve two. Um, the next council meeting will be, Ms. Johnson will come in and discuss all of the grants, but. If we wanna come up with a time to discuss just this one and see how we can move it forward and and all that, I would. I will definitely recommend that we do that sooner than later.
And I'm gonna just say this briefly while we could, while I may know publicly. I can recall sitting here and having a presentation done by um administration on the grants. And it kind of, you know, caught me by surprise when I'm sitting here looking at the grants and I see like maybe one on the CRA side, which it wasn't. Um, bold that way and now everything on the town side without I recollection, without us even having any consent on how. These things are being done and how the matter of it is being done, that's why I'm sitting here like, man.
So so councilman, what I have done, because of all the communication that's been going on, I have instructed. Uh, Dr. Johnson has already been working on it. I'm also getting documentation from the grantor, whoever wrote those grants. They're telling us exactly who those grants belong to. So I'm having documentation to go along with it, so I will not be coming back at you with hearsay. I'm coming back with all documentation and but clarity, because someone writes the grant doesn't mean that they're the one who gets the grant.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So just to get everybody.
It's 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 what, like you said, you know, it's it's to get with this, you know what I'm saying, collecting.
Council. The uh vans for recreation, where the money for those vans, where did the money come from?
It 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 came out of this grant.
Out of the community policing grant?
Yes, ma'am.
So how much was that?
Sixty thousand, Ms. Gibson, huh? To my recognition, it's it's sixty thousand, that's for the the bus and the van.
Okay, so that amount is deducted from the one million.
Correct.
Okay, so we already have those funds already or we just, how how does that work? As far as for us to pay that for those things.
We expense it and then DOJ reimburses back. And then we also did the ring doorbells also.
I think we we paid for this, not on, it's on the agenda.
It's discussion.
Yeah, it's on discussion. And I I'll get back with you all no later than tomorrow. I give staff first thing in the morning.
Thank you, Ms. Monday. The final item is the discussion of the selling purchase for three oh eight, he's Kennedy.
So with with that, that property three oh eight is the property that's across from town hall, the uh. Old frame shop across the street. Um, it's been moved to discussion because um gotta finish talking with legal, it came in at the very end. But uh it would be coming up under grant also, so I guess this right alignment. Um, the two million dollar grant was which will be used for uh acquisitions of land. That's what that 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 grant states and then the difference that's left over from that grant can be used. According to the grant or it could be used to purchase even more land, but we have to first over that amount. But we first would have to use it for the amount that it was um allocated.
Speaking of purchasing of any property in the town, I can recall um us having an opportunity to do something. That was significant for, I think, this community and that's purchasing a hotel and we had the funds to do it. And um chose not to for whatever reason according to this administration and I think we did ourselves injustice by. No, 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 when we had the opportunity to buy it before it was sold.
When we were ready to buy it, it was sold.
No, but we had an opportunity to buy it before it was actually sold to the individual that owns it now. Now, I don't, now, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, but that was this, that was the case. And we're sitting here now, which is okay, trying to purchase something that uh is probably half that. And I don't, you know, like I said, though, it's a lot of, we we picking shoes on what we wanna do and how we wanna do it and when we wanna do it. But even then, I think it was a great idea, you know what I'm saying, to purchase this property, look at the property itself. Look at the land space, look at the, you know, dynamics of where it sits and everything, you know what I'm saying? It just would have made a lot more sense. Especially when we were we were in a position to afford it, you know what I'm saying? I consider we we had to um go and borrow money or what happened, we had the money. To do it. And the owner was willing to work with us, you know, and that's another thing that I've been trying to wrap my head around, was that personal? Because it seemed like a lot of things are personal up here when you ask me personally, I don't wear my 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 feelings on my sleeve. I got a job in. And that's what I'm gonna continue doing, no matter what, I'm not gonna sit up and be in my feelings about anything. What we're gonna do is for the best interest of this community and I felt like we dropped the ball and formed the ball. While having an opportunity to really grab it by the handle and do something significant for this community, but we chose to do. Things outside of that because we're somewhere in our feelings, you know what I'm saying? And I don't think that's good for the community, especially as leaders up here. Making educated decisions that's gonna, you know, you know, make sure that we're successful, moving forward and sustainable also. Now, how significant that would have been though, like for real, and purchasing this particular um property down here. That we had an opportunity and I can, and I know for a fact that opportunity was uh seeked to us and we didn't move on. Way before this other particular person purchased it. So don't sit here and tell me that it was brought, of course it was brought. Who won by for that price? Who win? And we had an opportunity, we had the money, we could have had money still saved over. I could purchase in this park, but we chose not to. And that's a problem with it. It's a problem.
One question, two million dollars purchase, the the two million dollar acquisition purchase property, wouldn't it have to be used for?
Land acquisition, correct, Ms. Gibson?
Land, but will need to be built on.
We want four of our housing.
So if you wanna put four houses on this corner, it'd be purchased right.
Or mixed shoes.
It's a hard no.
That's what it was gonna be at the hotel, it was mixed shoe.
I I have a question, um, you said that the money for this building is coming from the two million dollars?
The two million dollar grant.
The two million dollar grant, okay, um. Where is this coming from?
This is got two million dollar grant out there that would do acquisitions, but not for.
This this building, this building over across the street is way over fifty years old. I know it has to be over fifty years old. Um, and it's probably much older than that and maybe.
Please hold your con- your conversation.
Yeah, so I can't see this money is old.
Um, chief, again, these are adults, I just add to the whole conversation, but it is loud. Council.
Alright, thank you. Uh, yes, I I don't really value putting six hundred and, what is it, forty thousand dollars? Uh, in that ballpark figure in in that facility. Facility is out, um, it's not upgraded. It is, um, it's in poor condition and I I just don't see the. What are we gonna use them, what are we gonna use the building for? Nothing has been stated as to the purpose of buying it other than just buying property. And that's one of the things that we always have to be very careful about. Being from a smaller community that we have here, we have to be much more, much more smarter. Realizing that if we keep buying all this property in Eatonville, we taking property off of the tax road. Now, when I did the research today, this property has um a tax. Is taxed at a little over four grand, but out of the four grand, Eatonville gets eleven hundred dollars. For the portion that I saw today uh on the uh the county records. So, um, we have to be very uh careful between the town overall and the CRA. We have all of this property and nothing, absolutely nothing has been developed on any properties that we have. Doesn't matter if it's a town property or the CRA property, nothing in the last year has been done with the properties that we. And totally in the town. And that's uh ones that are coming off of our tax basis that we gonna have to update. So I look at what is it that we gonna prepare ourselves for the next future in Eatonville? We can't depend on grants all the time because it may not work for us in years to come. So we got to start thinking much smarter than where we are right now, so that way we can keep this town stable and keep it moving. In the next years to come.
Hey, I, that was, that was the last item on the agenda. We're ready for reports. Mister Deckers.
Good evening, everyone. Thank everyone for coming out. Um, brief report. So we've we've been talking about how do we move town forward, how do we um really expand our knowledge base and all that? So uh I'm happy to say on December first at nine AM, uh all of the leadership, all of the directors and chief. Will be going over to the city of Apoca. And we're gonna be having a session where we can ask all of their uh their leaders. Who in questions and how about policies, updates and just different things that's going on. I know someone's gonna ask a question, why do we pick Apoca? There's only three strong mayor, um, municipalities in Orange County. Eatonville, Orlando and Apoca. So Eaton, uh Apoca is more. Um, in alignment with us and then also our attorney is the attorney for Apoca, so. If we get ideas and things from them, it'd be easy for us to conform here in the town to move us a lot faster. Other updates on tasks, um, the personnel manual is about twenty-five to thirty-five percent complete.
Other updates on tasks, um, the personnel manual is about twenty-five to thirty-five percent complete. Um, thank you all for passing the hiring policy tonight, it was a hundred percent. Uh, electronic permitting right now is at fifty percent, we have a couple other things to get passed, but we're trying to have, we're now our permitting department, you can submit everything online as well as upload online. Um, ADP configurations is about seventy-five percent. We're actively involved in the audit situation right now, and budget analysis. And um, partly for the next agenda that's coming up in December. We are revamping the special advance policy, the special advance policy has some work that needs to be done and making sure that we're um really covering the risk of the town, and even make sure that we're watched over. Um, upcoming decisions for you all to be thinking about will be charitable donation policy, as well as there will be a solid waste fee increase coming up. We have some fees, uh Orange County went up on their solid ways, so we have to do the same thing, or we'll be taking a loss. Upcoming events, um, December the second, the next um town council workshop and um council meeting. We're gonna do the tree lighting during that time, we're doing in between, so we'll um come in for workshop, we'll go from workshop. Will the journey go out, do the tree lighting, then we'll come back in for town council meeting. Think it'd just be a good added touch during that time. Um, councilwoman talked about her annual Thanksgiving event on Monday. Um, kicking with Ms. Kim's one um that Wednesday. Christmas on the Boulevard will be um December eighteenth, and MLK parade is January seventeenth. So our, our objective right now is to be ninety days out. We're trying to be ninety days out on planning the events, and let the community be known, so we can have more engagement, and people more of that. And I say for tomorrow.
You want me, you want me to report out? Okay, um, from the clerk's office, just so uh you'll be aware, in the upcoming day on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and December the first, we will be hosting our record management uh workshop session, which will be uh, all departments will be hands on deck and getting our records under uh control, making sure that we have uh records that are beyond their retention date, that they have been exposed. For uh those that are within retention, that we properly, properly store them and uh have them shipped to file bay. So um we look, we're looking to have that done, the delivery to file bay by the beginning of or mid part of January. So that's something that's gonna be happening in the upcoming week, so this uh chambers will be closed off. It will be a work area for our record management uh initiative. But in the long run, it's gonna put us in a better position when it comes to uh our record uh overall record management. I wanted to let you know that, so uh I don't know if um Mr. Daniels wanted to speak on it, but I just wanted to let the council know that the chambers will be closed off the last week of November for this initiative.
Do you have any reports?
No, we won't speak.
Alright, I'm gonna start off tonight, I got a lot, I got a lot. Um, first, I went to let the people see at Rollins College this weekend, if you didn't have an opportunity to go to to that performance, um that was the first time, it, it kinda told the story of Zora. But the significance of it was that Zora was never allowed to um have her place presented in the Annie Russell Theater. So the performance was Zora, and it was at the Annie Russell Theater. So, so that was quite significant, I knew about it because I saw it on Facebook. And it was already two weeks, so I mean, that, so it was unfortunate that, you know, more people didn't know about it, and I just happened to run across it, but I, I did enjoy seeing that talented artists. Um condolences and prayers to families, our family's going through a lot right now, so condolences to those that have lost loved ones. Um, and prayers for those that have to go through what's going on in the nation right now. So um, and hopefully with the food giveaways that are coming up, it really helps them, and, and they can stretch it out a little longer until um everything, funds or whatever they need gets to them. Um, I have tickets to the Boys and Girls Club in Orlando Magic, their food giveaway is tomorrow. And I received the tickets today, there are twenty tickets, so if each councilperson gets four, you know, of a family then please, um, can I give this to you? And just leave my phone there. Um, see, uh Mr. Daniels is gonna give you the four tickets, and again, it's tomorrow, and it's gonna be at the Boys and Girls Club. In regards to the town and the future, if we keep letting people buy up land and they make the decisions, know what goes on that land, we're jeopardizing. If we don't do anything, we're jeopardized. Grant funds, as was stated, are not always there, but it's there right now. And we're doing everything in our power to make certain that we go ahead and spend the funds, so we don't jeopardize those funds having been returned. And I'm gonna say it, and I'm gonna say it again. The children that I saw going into the bushes to use the bathrooms that pushed my need to make sure we got funds for bathrooms, that's how it started. Anything that was given in appropriations, it was at my request. The fact that it was CRA or town, it really didn't matter, it didn't. But what did matter is you had children using the bathroom in the bushes, and then adults. It, it, nothing is right about that, so whether a building has, you have to clear through the, through the law enforcement, or rather, you can, you have to clear through the rec center or the recreation department to use it, that shouldn't happen, that shouldn't happen. Because how I saw that, when I said the building, I said, man, that is a way because at the time, there were some gentlemen that would be at the corner of Cabinet Street and Campus Field. I said, it would be wonderful if instead of standing out there, they go inside and strike up conversations with law enforcement. So when the grant had to go DOJ, it really answered a prayer. Because when I found out that the bathrooms cost so much, so maybe we can get a building, oh, if we can get a building, now we can bring two pieces together, and we talk about community coming together and community policing, that's soft. That's soft, that's common sense, it's not about a building, it, it whatever it's about, please, 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 think about people, that's all I ask. Redevelopment and revitalization will only occur if we get the land. Master plan will only occur if we get the land, or perhaps someone comes in and says, this is what I wanna do, and it fits in that planning. But it all goes together, and if we have the opportunity to purchase the land to build affordable housing while we miss, while, while we miss that opportunity. I, I, I don't get, I don't get it. I pray that, I, I thank the council for the resolution being passed, because if you read the resolution, that is the charter. That's the charter. So you just made it clear to me that you understand the role of the strong mayor of the town of Eatonville, you just put it in a resolution. The only thing that I would wish, I was holding off on asking for an extension from councilman uh to congressman, frost office, anyone, holding off because we need to start getting something done, why would someone give an extension, so the mayor, the strong mayor had chosen not to contact anyone's office. So that causes confusion when a councilman sends a, a letter and I'm assuming it's on behalf of the town. So let's think about that charter that was reflected in that resolution tonight. And let's think about the roles that we play up here, because I think this administration has done a doggone good job for four years. And here's what I truly hope, is that the next mayor, you come with courage. And you be willing to stand firm on what you believe, I'm bringing tears now. There is nothing that I do here that is about me, never has been. It's been about people, not just two, three, or four people, like it has been for decades. It's for the whole community, it's for everyone, every decision. Nothing has been done on purpose, if you think it was wrong, but you just voted it out, so I know you knew it wasn't wrong, because your charter didn't say it. The charter didn't say, and your resolution didn't say it. But I follow the chart, but what you're not used to is a strong mayor, being a strong mayor. Because in this town, if we wanted to do right by our people, you gotta be a strong mayor. So the next mayor must be willing to stand firm in their conviction for what's right for the town. And I, I, I think that was it. I think that was it.
But following that, wow. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I wish um that we had those kind of words when we let school board. That would help us a lot, if you save that property over there, would it help us, then after them? So I, I wish they had been provided, but we're not in control, so on that issue there, definitely. That's one thing that didn't go right with this administration. But thank you everybody for coming out today, and my condolences to all who's down this going through what, you know, what this world's putting us through. And uh, like I said, Mayor, definitely gotta be strong, but be transparent, say the words of my former colleague Mr. Martin James, and uh be proactive, that's one thing we need to be, and that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Uh Director, Houseman, Daniels.
Just wanna give condolences uh to my family, uh we lost family member Betty Austin, Berkshire, we call her Red, uh family, so we just keep our family in prayer. Uh, Ms. King, I just wanna say great job, I was expecting something to go wrong, but very professional how she went out and putting that guy's thing up, and I just wanna say great job, that's it.
Housewoman.
Hello again, oh yeah, I do have just a couple things here. And uh first of all, I'm going to make a statement based upon what the mayor has said. Mayor, you are right, we do have a strong um mayor, uh council. But also, at the same time, we also have, in my opinion, a strong council, new council members as well. This um resolution that was, I just wanna put this before the people, this resolution that has been stated tonight it has nothing to do with how strong you are, or how mighty you are. What it has to do with is that we as a council are saying to everyone and that is, we have the right to voice our opinion. The mayor cannot carry a message for the council of something that we did not vote upon, okay? So, that doesn't make you strong, Mayor, and I just wanna just point that out to you, what we want is respect integrity, honesty to all the members here on the council, we want transparency because we represent the people here of Eatonville for them, we represent you, everyone out here, we represent you. And that's what we're saying here, so I don't think there's not one council member up here will be against the town moving in development, we all want development, we deserve to be developed. We deserve better, and I've heard that slogan from you about three years ago, that we deserve better. And we do, we as a council, we deserve better, we deserve to know when things are going on, that we should be informed about. And that's just what this is all about, it's not about saying what's right and what's wrong. This resolution provides an extra protection for us as council members, that this cannot happen again. It has to be transparency, and this is what this is all about. Also, another statement that you had made earlier is that you stated that developing property was not an option for Eatonville. In my opinion, it is an option for us in Eatonville, because when there's no transparency, and there's no respect to your leaders and your legislators that are up here today, those who are here then what, what else is left, what else is left? We're here to fulfill our duties as our council members, and we deserve to have transparency um also with our residents. Now, I'm gonna move on to another issue. Um, Congress, um Congressman, Councilmember Mac had stated uh before uh had mentioned about the water, we still haven't heard anything about water rates. Haven't heard anything about that. And also, I had two business owners over the last two weeks asked about the waste container uh information that we sent to them over two years ago, and nothing has been done, so are we going to continue with that? Uh, Mr. Marlon Daniels, you can look into that.
What, what was it, the waste?
The waste containers, a requirement for the waste containers, it was a code enforcement, it was a code enforcement violation. Where were several people in the town, maybe over twenty, thirty, were cited for not having correct uh waste containers uh that was up to code. Enclosures, yes, thank you.
So Councilwoman, if you could, I'm afraid, can you give me who those people are, and I will look into will the chief and code enforcement come tomorrow?
Yeah, they have a, they have a record on it, and I think I have the email listing all of the business owners that were sent a letter. And that's been probably over two years ago now. Okay, um, next is, I have a question for the attorney. If the town buys property and owns property, and at some point, there's a building that is being constructed to put on that property, and let's say it's a commercial business, want to lease the property or rent the property. Is the town subject to paying taxes on the dwelling, or how does that work? Is it still tax exempt property, even though it's being used for non municipal purposes?
So the answer would be a different, that's what, type of building, how much of the building is occupied, how much of the building is leased? So typically in that situation, you have a situation where the town would actually sell the land to the builder to construct it, instead of the town constructing a building and fixing it out.
Okay, but we, we have to establish what is the best method here for the town. Once we buy property, and we wanna develop the property, but we still want to own the property at the same time. So I'm just trying to figure out, how does that work?
So you're saying lease the land out, like a lease agreement for land?
Um, well, we are own the property, let's say if we own this building, if someone wants to move in here and start a business in this building here, would this property still be tax exempt, or would it be not tax exempt? Even though it's in our name, the town of Eatonville.
So it's not like being a position where it's a land or, or different businesses and stuff like that, that's a situation in the town, they're just gonna sell the property, and let somebody else develop it.
Well, okay, okay, so that's what I was, I was trying to get an answer with that, so I'm just, I'm not really clear about that. Other than that, I don't have anything, our prayers for Mrs. Johnson and the um illness of her husband, I understand he's in the hospital, so just keep giving your prayers. And I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, thank you.
Uh, yeah, just first of all, I'd just like to thank everybody, coming out to see you, being engaged in town business, um I know how important it is to contribute, meaning, and you know, just show your engagement on what goes on in the community, um also, my condolences go out to anybody that uh that has suffered any loss um in the community, or in the surrounding communities, and um my thoughts and prayers are with your family, on the Austin family, um I knew her, and she was such a um bright light to the town of Eatonville before moving out, so um my condolences definitely go out to your family. Also, I'd just like to piggyback on the um, the strong mayor um position that uh Mayor Gardner holds. Listen, I had a great opportunity to sit on that board, which is the charter to write the Bible to this community, um you know, only thing that trumps that is the state of Florida statue, and um, with that being said, just because you have an opportunity to be a strong mayor of government, don't mean you And, um, with that being said, just because you have an opportunity to be a strong mayor of government, don't mean you necessarily have to. I say what, step outside of your boundaries in a sense and do things that are immoral, you know, especially with, um, just recently happened with the, um. Property of, um, Orange County, with the property that we're dealing with over there. And for that to take place the way it took place, it still doesn't sit well with me, it puts a bad taste in my mouth. And what we did tonight is not just for the benefit of, um, this board, but for this community, you know. I worked for the town last time I, I checked, when I sworn on the oath to do everything in my power to make sure that I'm protecting this community, that's what I meant. And, um, things that have been done, um, without this council is unprecedented, um. I don't even know if some of those is even legal, but at the same time, uh, it, it doesn't sit well with me. But I think moving forward, we definitely need to do something that's gonna be, um, tremendous and significant enough to make sure that we're successful moving forward. We're constructing and doing things, because we haven't did anything significant in this community since I've been sitting up here. Besides this host app, and we've been working on that for about five years now, and it still haven't been in completion. And that's another matter that, um, I have a problem with too. So, um, with that being said, I just, you know, it's, I got more questions than I got answers, um, at this time. But I get into that when I actually have my meeting with the CEO, um, Mister Daniels. But also, I'd just like to thank all the presentations, it was only one tonight, and that was PC. I'm glad we had an opportunity to, um, get that passed. Uh, I know how, um, important it is to just show the, um, education component of just having them within our community. You know, it is coming out from different schools and different counties and things, with that nature right there, just to show. Um, you know, we're all about as far as Zora now, so, um, kudos to, um, Mr. NY. For, um, conducting that on a yearly, um, basis also. Again, a water rate, I know I spoke about this, well, I change the speaker about it every meeting, and, um. I didn't really get answers, um, concerning the, um, possibility of, uh, my citizens and residents getting, uh, reimbursed for, um. What they're deserving of, so I, I definitely, uh, continue to reach out to, um, this administration to see if we can, um, narrow this thing down. And move forward with doing something that's gonna be, um, like mine. And also, um. We just gotta be mindful of how we, you know, go about doing things in this community, especially. When we picking shoes on what we wanna do in terms of property that we wanna pop, buy. We had a great opportunity to buy something down here that would have been, you know, so relevant for this community, but we chose not to, where you wanna sit here. And I'm glad it wasn't, I'm glad it wasn't down for a decision because it would have failed with me. But I'm glad we came to the opportunity to discuss this issue and probably move forward. Doing things that's gonna be, um, more advantageous than doing the right thing in this community with more engagement. So, um, that's something that I'm looking forward to, I know you're gonna, um, be working on that, Mister Daniels. And, um, attorney, you know, my question to you is always gonna be, with the town of Eatonville having lawsuits.
Yes, sir.
Okay, appreciate it, and then I'm also looking forward to, um, the, um, just, you know, giving back. You know, I know it's a lot of hardship right now, and a lot of things are going on in America that we don't necessarily, you know, welcome, but it's happening, you know what I'm saying? Life is life, and at this particular time, I know a lot of, a lot of people are going through some real hardship. And thank God for people like, um, Miss, um, Councilwoman Randolph, who. Even before becoming the Councilwoman, she's always been adamant about just taking care of the people and making sure that everybody's fed. And I had an opportunity to help her out while sitting on council, while she sat in front of me, um, asking us, um. You know, for our participation and helping out, and I was more happy to, um, make sure that that happened for her. So, um, I, I, I give you kudos and flowers for just doing all the things that you do in this community and making sure that all the people are being fed. And, um, I know how hard it is to, you know, just not have something to eat, a lot of times to go to sleep. Hungry, man, I know it's easy for us to sit here and elaborate on, you know, us eating, but other people really are suffering. I have anyways, I just wanted to, um, say that, and then also, you know, Board of Girls Club, you know, thank you guys also. For just, you know, um, being that beacon light in our community, also to do the same thing that, um, this Council Randolph is doing. But, you know, making sure our people are okay, not just for the Thanksgiving time, but for the Christmas holidays too. I've seen them give at least one kid ten gifts, you know, so that's, that's pretty significant. So they're only be able to continue doing that on a yearly basis, so, um, my hats go out to you, um, as well. And I just wanna give a big congratulations to the edge with, um, football, we won our first round of, um, playoffs. Last Friday, we got our second round this Friday against Temple Lake Tech. And, um, wishing all those boys, um, good luck moving forward, might be moved to the third round. And if all hearts and minds are clear, that's my report, I have a good evening.
I did forget something. I want to thank everyone that's going to the schools tomorrow for teaching, and don't forget your tickets. Today is the S tomorrow, and, and the term strong mayor is part of our charter, which is mainly why I use it. So, even though you gotta be a strong man, that's why I used to, good night, everyone, um, if that. Move, move for the attorney. Is there motion to adjourn or move? It's been moved in second. It's been moved in second, all of them say aye, all opposed. Alright, fine.